Seven PM, the Kalih Kalamah Neighborhood Board is in session. We're gonna start off with the city monthly reports, first from the fire department.
Good evening, Captain Paul Bass, I'm here at Kalih Fire Station. Do you see the statistics for previous month? For more details on the incidents and related mapping information, please visit a fire response map on our HFP website at fire.honolulu.gov under the News and Info tab. Should you have any questions, please email the HFD Public Affairs Media Liaison at hfdnhb@honolulu.gov. So, for fires, for April, we had two structure fires, no brush fires, thank goodness. Ten nuisance fires, which is like, guys burning stuff. No cooking fires, and four activated alarms with no fire. Medical emergencies, we had 218. We had one motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian, and nine motor vehicle crashes by themselves. One ocean rescue, and three hazardous materials incidents. So, this is the fire safety tip. Home fire sprinklers. Fire sprinklers serve as a first line of defense against fires, and often extinguish the fire before the fire department arrives. For more information, visit homefiresprinkler.org. Fire spreads quickly, and a fire can burn deadly in under two minutes. Synthetic materials burn quickly and release deadly poisonous smoke. High-risk individuals in home fire, home fires, include small children, elderly adults, those with disabilities, and pets. Fire sprinklers protect your home and family, and activate automatically to control the fire, thereby giving everyone a chance to escape. The best protection is having working smoke alarms, fire sprinklers, and a practiced fire escape plan. Information about Honolulu's ordinances relating to fire safety is available at fire.honolulu.gov.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, for like hazardous materials, right? Like batteries, or tires, right? Is there a specific place that people are supposed to go to dispose of those things?
Yeah. I think actually the tires are collected by tire companies, recycled. The lithium batteries, the thing I know about those, is some Home Depot, Liliha's, they have an amnesty box where you can dump all batteries. There's a fellow down here, Battery Bill. He actually charges a little fee to take those batteries, but we looked at his area, and he actually puts them in sealed containers. All that's safe, all that he does.
So, I wanna make sure I heard you correctly, because this is getting recorded. So, the public can go to Home Depot and Lowe's to dump their-
Not sure about Lowe's, but Home Depot has a battery bin, you can go.
Battery bin? Is that inclusive of car batteries?
Those also, I'm saying.
Is that inclusive of car batteries too?
No, actually, car batteries-
Car battery people are-
When you go buy a new battery, you're supposed to take the old battery back, and they usually have a deposit.
Oh, okay. Very good, very good.
And if any of your constituents want to find out where or how to dispose of hazardous waste, opawa.org for the electronic stuff, and opawa.org for everything else.
Perfect. Thank you so much. This is getting recorded, so it's by law.
Just one question. So, we had the two fires that happened, I think that was, it was on Banning Street at Lea, there was a fire that was there over a house. Is that still an online investigation, or was that just, I don't know what was that?
I don't think the investigation, investigation is still ongoing, but I haven't looked into it specifically. Usually, the fire investigators wrap up their work within a few weeks, unless something unusual happened.
Any more questions for the board or online? Any questions from the community?
Karina, thank you so much for all your work and time and dedication.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Stay safe.
Sorry, Ms. Farm. Would you like to find the answer to that?
Yeah, because I mean, in less than, I think it was two weeks, they had one that was almost in the same area. There was one at Banning, there was like another fire that was-
Yeah, Alakale, multiple houses.
Yeah. So, who cares about that, like what, you know, was causing that, or is it?
Well, in both cases, there was squatters living at a vacant house.
It's almost like a capoeira in a sense, when they have-
Yeah, it's like-
Okay.
But I'll have to look into the actual cause with the investigators.
Okay.
I'll try you now.
I have a question.
Okay.
You know all these fire alarms? This is supposed to go-
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, because this is being recorded on camera too. If you can come to the table and state your name.
Yeah. For the record.
Is there an extra chair?
Please, you all come on, it's a very nice family. Hello. Hi, I'm June from KPT. So, my question is, all these alarms in the units, every time when you cook, the alarm goes off. Supposed to do that all the time?
Well, anytime smoke is detected, they'll like do that.
Yeah, but, I mean, no matter what kind of shit, the thing off.
Yeah.
So, it's, um-
It's very sensitive.
Yeah.
Well, we have a fish recipe?
Yeah, I'm-
The fried fish, huh? Go on, first step is move the battery.
Oh.
But put the battery back. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, one more. Sorry, I'm not trying to, but, okay, so you know the alarm for the carbon monoxide?
Yeah.
So, I mean, does it have the same beep? Because it seems like, I ain't never seen that thing, you know?
Yeah, well, I thought one, carbon monoxide alarm for when I traveled the main night. When you're heating, you're heating your house.
Goes off.
That's, that's how, how come the guys get that. We don't even need it over here, because I'm not heating our house.
Okay.
But yeah, the, the sound will probably be similar to a fire alarm.
Thank you so much, Captain.
I'll go answer the question, Captain. So, carbon monoxide detector alarms have four beeps, so-
Beep, 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 beep.
Smoke is three. So, that's how you distinguish whether it's a carbon monoxide or a smoke. Smoke is three beeps, carbon monoxide is four beeps. Four beeps, yes, four beeps. Okay?
Thank you so much. I gotta get back to work. Okay, we're gonna move on with HPD District 1.
Hey, you guys see me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Sergeant Shimo Bukuro, with the Honolulu Police Department's District 1 Chinatown area. I have your statistics.
I'm not sure if it's your volume or our volume, but it's kinda low.
Okay, hang on, let me try to raise it up for you. Can you guys hear me okay now?
If you can increase it a little bit more, please.
Sorry, it looks like I'm on max.
Okay, that sounds better. You're talking to it a little bit better.
Okay, I got your District 1 statistics for Neighborhood Board 15. For the month of April, we had one auto theft, two thefts. Assaults are up this month with three, and we had one drug-type case. What we did see is an uptick in the Ala Park area, where chemical agents were used. So, we're asking that the public be vigilant, especially at night, when they're walking around that area, that they either walk with friends, family, and be cautious of their surroundings. If you're looking for additional statistics, they can be located at the Honolulu Police Department's public website, located at www.honolulupd.org. At this time, I'll open up to any questions for the District 1 area.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the board online? Any questions from the community? Karina, thank you so much, officer. Thank you for all that you do.
Okay, folks, have a great night. Thank you.
You too. Keep moving along to Honolulu Police Department, District 5.
Good evening, Lieutenant Yamashita here, from Kalih, District 5. I'll go over the statistics for the month of April. So, in April, we had six aggravated assaults, twenty auto thefts, ten burglaries. We had four robberies, zero sex assaults, sixteen simple assaults. We had thirty-one thefts and nine car break-ins. Our total calls for service were 2,951. I'll go over some other robberies that we, we had. For one of them, it's still pending further developments. The suspects are unknown. The suspect approached a juvenile male at the Kala'kaa Gym, used force to take his belongings, and it's still under further investigation. It's pending with a robbery detective at this time. The other robberies, the detectives contacted the complainants back, and they declined to prosecute at this time. So, the complaints were withdrawn. Lastly, we also have a District 5 Coffee with a Cop coming up. It's gonna be on June 13, which is a Friday. It's gonna be located at the 414 North School Street McDonald's. And the event will be held from 9:00 to 11:00. So, give the opportunity for the members of the community to come out and share some stories and build relationships with the police officers. Other than that, I'll take any questions, comments, or concerns, please.
Two things, officer. Thank you so much. The first thing, can you repeat one more time the coffee with the cop? Time and location?
Sure. Sure. So, the Coffee with a Cop is gonna be on Friday, June 13. And the time is from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And the location is at 414 North School Street. It's gonna be at the McDonald's on Liliha. So, June 13, which is a Friday, 9 to 11. 414 North School Street, McDonald's on Liliha Street.
Thank you so much. Okay, any questions from the board?
Yes.
Go ahead, Tom.
Where is 414 North School Street? I live at 1015.
Okay. 414, I believe, is the one by North School and Liliha?
Okay, before I forget, I wanna mention something for HPD. I know June 6, Friday, June 6 is National Donut Day. And I know the Salvation Army will be donating a whole bunch of donuts in celebration of the official donut day on June 6, Friday, to SHOPO. SHOPO will be distributing a whole bunch of donuts to all the officers in appreciation for all your hard work and dedication. So, please write that down and share that with your command. June 6, Friday,
Okay.
Salvation Army will be donating to SHOPO. SHOPO will be distributing it to all officers. First come, first served.
Do you know, do you know the time that they'll be donating it?
It'll be from, I believe, 9 to 11:00 AM. Friday, June 6.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Please share that with your commander. Are there any questions from the community? Any questions online? Thank you so much. I'll leave you. I know you're so busy. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Have a good day.
Order water supply, Iris Oda.
We got next.
Hello, you were next.
Hi there.
Hi.
Okay, so I'm here to just report that we did have one main break on 421, at 672 Banister Street. And I have one general announcement. The summer water conservation tip. So, the sun is turning up the heat. The summer, and summer is just around the corner. So, it's important to ensure that we're saving every drop of water to keep our community strong and sustainable today and for future generations to come. So, if you go to our borderwatersupply.com/SevenWays, you can see some tips, and tips like water your plants early in the morning to reduce evaporation. You can take shorter showers. You can check for toilet leaks. The culprit is usually a faulty flapper. And don't let your faucet run and run. And apply for border water supply rebates on water-efficient appliances and systems. So, saving water not only helps conserve this precious resource, but it can also lower your water bill. And what I'm looking for, and how I mentioned about checking for toilet leaks, there's these die tablets. I left some on the table, also for the public. And if you guys want more, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And some more, there we go.
Nice.
So, there's two tablets in there. You put it in your tank. And you put it in your tank, and there's instructions. You put it in your tank, and you let it sit, I wanna say for five or fifteen minutes. And don't flush it or anything. And if you see the blue in your toilet bowl, there's a leak between your tank and the bowl. So, then you know, okay, your flapper or something is leaking. Need to take care of that, because wasted water, right? So, you can take care of that. So, yeah, if you need more die tablets, I can bring it next month.
Oh.
And, let's see. And actually, I passed out a map to everybody for the board, for the, the, online. But I actually realized, this is for number 16 of Kalih Valley. People, but I covered this a while ago, a couple months ago. But for those that got it, it's just a border water supply project near the, the North School Street Water System Improvements. The dark black line is the potential of the project alignment. I didn't bring the schedule with me, but I just wanted to let you know that there is a project in the area. So, we wanted to let you know that. And since I'm letting you guys know that, a question that was asked from the Neighborhood Board Valley, Neighborhood Board of Kalih Valley, they were asking about the Fred Ford Museum. So, if you guys are interested, that's at our Kalih pump station, near Hoftailing. So, they wanna go and see the museum, which I've never seen myself.
I wanna see it.
Yeah, I wanna see it.
Yeah, I'd like to see it.
Yes, but unfortunately, right now, it's closed because they were doing construction on it. But then, they were doing construction, and then there's gonna be a fire alarm replacement that's starting in June of this year, and it's about two years. So, it's not gonna be till 2027 at the earliest that it might be available to be open. So, hopefully, you know, we'll report when it does open, and then we can go to the museum.
Nice.
And I'm hoping to see it myself.
Will that be available online for when that's gonna be open for the community and the public?
I would think they probably would put something online, because we do like push notices to the different Twitters and those different type of things that I don't do, but, um-
Okay.
But yeah, if it is not from me, there'll probably be something that they'll tell people that it's open. Because people, they know, I've been telling them that they're very, people are interested in going. I'm interested in going.
I'm interested.
Yeah, so, I'd like to see what it is.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Thank you so much. Hold on. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community or online? Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Well, next month, we have recess, by the way.
Okay, yeah, I'll be at, I'll be another one then, and reporting what I'm supposed to, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, location might, might change, Iris. It will change.
Oh, that's annoying.
Yeah, okay. Okay, uh, next up is the Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transit Art, Ramisa Gonzalez.
How does he?
Okay, gonna move on to presentations. Dave Simpson Planner, PBR Hawaii proposed DTS bus service changes for opening of the second phase of Skyline.
Hello.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jay. So, I'm with the Department of Transportation Services. The second phase of Skyline is scheduled to start on October 1 of this year. So, we've been working with StanTech and PBR Hawaii to create and modify some bus routes just to make sure that there's good connectivity between the bus and Skyline. So, I'd like to introduce Jay Kipolisin here, casting out his copies of the presentation. He's gonna share some of our proposals on our changes.
Aloha, good evening. I'm gonna share my screen.
Cool, they're nice on my name.
Awesome. Aloha again. My name is Katie, and I'm a planner with PBR Hawaii. We're planning a light-skipped architecture firm based here in Honolulu, and we're supporting the DTS with community engagement as they're connecting with 14 Neighborhood Boards over the course of a month to share information and seek feedback relating to some bus route changes that are under consideration with the next phase opening of Skyline. And the purpose of this presentation is to share those bus route changes that are under consideration. And the purpose for considering bus route changes is to better integrate the bus with Skyline as it opens. As Jay mentioned, it will be, the next phase opening will be October 1. And on the slide that you can see now, you can see the current extent to Aloha Stadium. And then, on the next slide, you can see, just graphically, that Skyline will extend to Middle Street. And what you see here in the smaller print, that's important to note on this slide, is that, um, that Skyline hours will be expanding with earlier stops and starts each day. And the bus changes are proposed to accommodate the rail extension, the bus hours, and to add more service to riders. We calculated, the bottom bullet point here, we wanted to make a point. We calculated the overall bus hours that are proposed within the current service changes and those that are under consideration is actually 40,000 additional bus hours is what's under proposal at this time. The bus service changes that are meant to complement the extension of Skyline, they began as early as March, and those first changes are complete. I'll share a slide that shows those changes. Then we've got a series of changes that I'll walk through that are anticipated for October 1. We'd like to get your feedback on those. And then, kind of a preview of some other ideas that are under consideration, that we'd also welcome feedback on. So, first are the, is one slide that just shows the routes that were adjusted in March with the first opening, back in March, in anticipation of this next opening. Routes were restructured to provide service to Skyline, and a new route was added to get riders from Eva Beach to the UH West Oahu Station. So, that's all that's shown on that, is the changes that have recently occurred. And then, we're gonna go into a series of slides that are, changes that are contemplated by the team. The first image that I'm showing you is just kind of a diagrammatic. So, that is one way of looking at how Skyline, Rail, and commuter routes can integrate together to get more people from their homes to their employment centers, to their jobs. The intention with this phase of work is to make commuter routes more reliable and faster for the people that choose to use them. So, the first image that I'm showing on the screen, and the one that's gonna follow that I'll walk you through, these are kind of before and after. The current slide shows the A-line as it is now. You can see that it extends all the way to the Pearl Ridge Station. And then, I'll show you on the next slide, what is under consideration is that the A-line would terminate at the Lagoon Drive. And then, the hours of service are proposed to be expanded to run later into the night. That's in the smaller print in the table there. And there's no change of frequency service. So, the point, I think, to consider with this slide, what this is illustrating is, when lines like this are truncated, it frees up the bus resources for use elsewhere on island. So, that's what is trying to be achieved here. The next route that I'd like to share that's under consideration for some changes is Route 20, which is under consideration for being discontinued and replaced with a new W-line. And you can remember this, like W going all the way up to Waikiki. So, the, what you're seeing on this screen is the dash line is the existing Route 20. And then, on the following slide that I'm gonna display for you next, is how the W-line is proposed to connect with Skyline at the airport. And then, you'll see in the written text, the smaller print, that the hours of service are expanding to add earlier mornings. But this route would still run late into the evening to serve people that work in Waikiki area. There's greater frequency of service proposed, giving riders more flexibility in commuting, in planning their commutes with fewer stops. This slide shows just a little more detail about some ways that this W-line could be changed. The detail is at the airport, where the loop through there might be changing, or is under consideration for change. And then, downtown, instead of passing through the couplet through the central business district, what is proposed or under consideration is to run the W-line along Nimitz Highway. So, another one for-
Instead of Billyham?
Right, before, it used to run through on Baritania.
Right.
And instead, it would be moved down to Nimitz Highway. So. That's what's under consideration and looking for feedback. The next one that I wanna run through is a proposed U-line. You can remember this, like University of Boise. This route would go from Mauna Funa to UH Manoa on weekdays. And the point of this service would allow anyone to catch Skyline and then hop on a limited stop bus that would get them to campus. The frequency is proposed to be every hour with extra trips during AM and PM peak hours. So, that's the U-line that's under consideration. This next slide and the one that follows relates to proposed changes to the routes that serve Joint Base Pearl Harbor, HICA. On this slide, you can see the 303 is in the yellow-orange dash line. And you can see how it's somewhat redundant with Skyline service. And then, on this next slide, what's proposed is 331 route, 331, that would connect Joint Base Pearl Harbor and serve that facility, but link it with Skyline. The next slide shows three routes, the 40, 42, and 51. And the proposal here is to reroute them to the Lagoon Drive, rather than further out to the stadium. And what is also noted in the second bullet point is that the Route 51, Wahua would stop at Pearl Highlands as well. This last proposed change is a fairly straightforward frequency change on Route 46, which runs between Kapale and UH West Oahu. Right now, they're running at an every-ten-minute service, and they're proposing to change that to every-15 minutes to kind of complement the demand that they're seeing on that route. So, those are the routes that are under consideration for change, and we'd like to get some feedback on. We'll have an email address out if you think of something later, where you can leave comments afterwards. And then, I just wanted to share a preview of a couple other slide, a couple other routes that are under consideration, a couple more slides. And on this graphic, you can kind of see this high-level Skyline and commuter routes working together. And so, I'm gonna talk about the C and E-lines, which are on the west side. So, what's proposed on this slide is a proposed C-line that runs, now runs from Makaha into town. Instead, it's under consideration for preview and for some feedback that it could run to the UH West Oahu Station, where then folks can get out, get out of traffic and onto Skyline for the rest of their commute into town. And the other route that we'd like to preview tonight is the E-line, which potentially could change, making it a more comprehensive. Is that, sorry to interrupt you. Okay, that's the last one that I wanna share. And here, I think it's important to share for the community that's online. If you do have comments that you'd like to share, please do so by July 15 to thebusstop@honolulu.gov. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board? Ken?
Sorry, I have several questions. One, and I don't know if this has been talked about yet, is the time between transfers? So, for somebody to say getting on the bus to Skyline or whatnot, how is that dealt with when it comes to person by the whole class? Is there a certain timeline for them to get on a bus, to get, you know, on Skyline or vice versa? Are they paying extra? How is this, how does that work out?
The fares are capped at, at a certain level.
The fares are capped at a certain level, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So there's a, right now, there's two and a half hours for transfers for anybody who uses the hold card. So no matter how many transfers you make within that two and a half hours, that means unlimited, right, by buses or Skyline, whatever. Unlimited within that two and a half hours. They'll just pay that, that initial fare, depending on your fare type. Regular dog is $3, two and a half hours from your first initial payment.
Sorry, this.
Wait, ten.
Sorry. So you mentioned about the 20 and, and every time I hear about like a W or like an L or something like that, because I use the bus a lot, it means just less stops. When is that information going to be exactly of what bus stops? The reason I'm doing is because the 20, for example, is the only one that goes down on Iwale over here. The county has a lot of offices that people use and utilize services that across from there. So there's nothing there. What is the, what, there's no alternative. Before you had the 20 and the 19, for example. 19 went away, now the 20s went away. How do we still have that, where that actually makes sense from that, from that level? A lot of people who are using those services rely on public transportation. So I hope that that would be something that is considered as part of this thing. And I understand that the intent is to get people from, you know, very quickly, but then you lose, you know, you're the person, I'll give a good example. The one for, the one, I'm sorry, the A used to come through King Street. It doesn't anymore. Only you have is the one, right? The one L doesn't need to go through our area for the most part. It, it's not usable in itself like other places. It doesn't stop in areas where it shouldn't, right? Federal utilization, high utilization is 12%. We're at 24% in our area. So having another one or something like that makes sense through the King Line, Trump Line Station, all the people that use that, that's just something I was trying to do. 24 is, is a 24-hour route, but it totally bypasses an area for which 24% of the individuals use public transportation, which is right over here on King Street.
Good comment. Thank you.
Good match.
Thank you. I do have a question and more so like a comment. I have ridden the bus just to check it out for myself to and from Waikiki, to Eva Beach and back, just to see the impact and the growth of how many people catch the bus and how early the workers catch the bus, just for my own research. I had to wake up god-awfully early to do that. And so many people were up at 3 o'clock, 3:30 in the morning in Eva Beach to catch that bus and it was full of so many workers. So many workers going into town and so many workers leaving Waikiki at 4:30, 5 o'clock every single day. I want to make sure those workers have a bus that's there for them and is safe for them. There's so many complexities in what I'm about to say. I'm concerned any route that impacts these workers and makes them even more tired, if anything's taken away from them, what impact are we seeing to our community? Is it in sync with the timeframe that it takes for them to then walk to the rail line, get and wait for the rail line and then get to work? Do they have to wake up at 2 o'clock in the morning now? Are they going to get home at 7 o'clock instead of 6? These workers are very tired. So whatever you can do to minimize the impact to the workers that catch the bus and depend on that every single day for three hours in traffic, just like everybody else, just to be mindful of that. Thanks for your time. Thank you. Any questions from the community? Hearing none. Thank you so much. I look forward to more presentations as this evolves. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Heart.
Yes. Hala Authority for Rapid Transit, Marissa Gonzalez.
No, it's Gabby.
Gabby?
Hi, Chair of the NOS, good evening, board members, everyone. I apologize, I was having, hi, I was having connection issues. So if you, if my video freezes or if my audio is a little choppy, just let me know.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so joining me with us this evening is Tara Konashiro from our Dillingham Utilities Relocation Contractor Non Inc. And Patrick Watson from our Downtown Utilities Relocation Contractor from Vekulcho. So I have a few updates for everyone. For our first update, Dilling, on Dillingham, Non recently backfilled the microtunneling pits off of Kohol and Kokea Street. So these are the pits where electrical lines are being run under and across the canal. So Non will soon be jet grouting the area off of Kohol and Kokea. Jet grouting is a soil stabilization method where the ground is pumped with a concrete slurry to stabilize the soil conditions enough to support infrastructure. So they're going to be starting that soon. After that, Non will be doing electrical infrastructure work off of both sides of the canal. So that's one of the big milestones that they're doing right now. For our second update, Hawaii News Now, about a week ago, they published a news story on the utilities project on Dillingham, where they define utility relocation, they shared the challenges of the project, like encountering unmapped utilities, soil conditions, coordinating concrete trucks to pour all the trenches, managing a crew of over, about 80 crew members for a 24/7 project and more. They highlighted that safety is the number one priority on the project and that crews and staff are trained for this. And I'll put the link in the chat for the article. It has a lot of really cool footage of what's inside the trench as well, trenches as well as our microtunneling pits. So yeah, I'll put the link in the chat. And for our last update, so Heart and our City Center Guideway and Stations Contractor, our CCGS contractor Tudor Pruney Corporation will be hosting the Chinatown Station or the Hualau Station Neighborhood Design Workshop on Thursday, June 26th from 6 to 8:30 PM at the Keili Koalani Middle School Cafeteria. The address is 1320 Queen Emma Street. So at the Neighborhood Design Workshop, attendees will have the opportunity to speak to project representatives, ask questions, and provide feedback on the preliminary designs for the Chinatown Station. It is just an in-person meeting. Yeah. So again, this design workshop will be held on Thursday, June 26th from 6 to 8:30 PM at Keili Koalani Middle School Cafeteria. So we will be hosting these Neighborhood Design Workshops in the coming months for other city center stations, including Kalihii, HCC, Iwale, Downtown, and the Civic Center stations. So once the dates are set, I will come back and share the schedule with you all. So a reminder for these workshops are, and any possible updates for these workshops are sent out via our eBlast. So signing up for our eBlast is highly encouraged and you can go to our website and sign up. Or you can send me your email privately in the message chat and I'll sign you up. I'll put a link to our website signup page in the chat as well. And then make sure to keep an eye on our social media, our Facebook, LinkedIn, Instagram, and X profiles, because we'll send out a meeting reminder there. So this concludes my presentation. If you would like to get in contact with Heart, you can email us at info@honolulutransit.org or call the 24/7 Project Hotline at 808-566-2299. And I'll put the information in the, in the chat. So now I'd like to open up the floor for any questions.
Any questions from the board? Thank you. Anybody online? Any questions from the community? Hearing none. Thank you so much, Gabby.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Have a good evening. I'm going to move along to Nathan Serota, Department of Parks and Recreation, Dog friendly park discussion.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Nathan Serota with the Honolulu Department of Parks and Recreation. Not much of a presentation that I had today because a lot of material was already provided in the letter that we sent to you folks and we did a bit of publicity a few weeks ago. But one thing that I did want to share was the map that was mentioned within that letter. See if I can do it. And Hard and I actually decided to use a desktop as well too because I'd had technical difficulties before using my phone. There we go. So this map was actually created custom for this effort. Basically, we're trying to expand the on-leash dog park privileges after we learned that less than 15% of our city parks allow dogs on a policy around Oahu. And so we knew that there's quite a bit of growing demand for spaces to walk a dog legally and to stay within a park with your leashed animal. So we created this map to just show exactly how many parks there are in your particular neighborhood and how many of them actually have leash park privileges. So one trick for this is to turn off the neighborhood board aspects and you can live in and actually see the different park areas. So right here, you have Ala Park, which has the on-leash dog park. And then just above that is a Beritania Community Park. So you can see, you actually, you folks actually have a decent amount of on-leash and off-leash dog park areas in comparison to a lot of other neighborhoods. But there are still a few sites that you could consider, including La Niqila District Park here and Ka'akau District Park as well. And so really, the idea is for you folks to determine, you know, which areas within your jurisdiction you would like to see on-leash privileges. This really logistically would mean that we would change the rules so that on-leash dogs would be allowed and it would be just a matter of changing the signage and updating our websites with the director's approval. Now, if you folks did want to pursue an off-leash dog park, that'd be a little bit more involved, where we'd have to do fencing and look at the irrigation capacity to see if we could provide some water for the animals as well too. But for the time being, we're kind of just looking at on-leash dog park privileges because again, that change can be made pretty easily when it comes to changing the actual park amenities. And so I really wanted to keep my presentation short just to open up for questions for you folks, because I imagine there's quite a few questions regarding the efforts.
Okay, thank you so much, Nathan. I do have a question, or like a comment. And then the rest of the board can have a discussion if you, if you will and open it up. The only exception to this that I'm requesting, and I think I verbalized it already prior, Lo'i Kalo Park is, I find to be and having, based on the information and the research that has been provided and is openly available, Lo'i Kalo Park is a cultural site of heritage for native Hawaiians. And I find it to be inappropriate for there to be animals and people walking around with their animals because there is a lo'i there for kalo and people do harvest it. So I wouldn't want somebody to get sick from harvesting it if, you know, the fecal matter touches the water, it would contaminate the whole thing. So I want to make sure that stays pristine for the community, because people do harvest. Other than that, I open that up to the board to have any discussion. Does anybody want to share?
Oh, I was going to agree with you with Lo'i Kalo Park. Unless they're like voluntary and stuff, where they have permission and like well-watched over. I think it's great ideas though.
Just for preservation. I, I am trying to fight for it to be recognized as a cultural heritage site for
And certainly with this effort, you, you bring up a valid point. If you wanted to, one recommendation, if you wanted to shift that privilege, that on-leash privilege from Lo'i Kalo to say another nearby park, that's certainly an option. So, and not only that, but it doesn't have to be the entire park that can be designated on-leash. There's actually, at Keili Koalani Park currently, there's only a section of the park that's legally on-leash area. And so if you wanted to, like I mentioned, so you have, looks like that's Lo'i Kalo right there. There's an adjacent park, a Peter Buck Mini Park. You could switch, you could recommend that we switch that privilege over to the Peter Buck Mini Park or to another area. I think La Niqila is, I'm not sure if that's in your folks' district. I think it's just right outside of it. Let me check. But yeah, still you can make that, it's right on the borders. You can still make that recommendation. But by all means
I think I like that recommendation.
Yeah, if there's a park where you folks have that privilege and you want to see it shifted somewhere else, by all means, that's, that's a recommendation that we welcome.
Well, I'm sold on that idea.
Yeah. If anything, though, I would, I would recommend, again, shifting that to another park so that, you know, there's still that availability for the public to be able to have that on-leash privilege just at another location that may be more appropriate.
I, I like your idea and I think I, I, I second it, everything we need to do.
Ken? Um, you talk about, about, I mean, you were mentioning about where there's on-leash and then it's off-leash. The only experience I have is what goes on in Ala Park. So is that, like, how would it be, like Ala Park is fairly large for what it is. How would it look like for something that's smaller? I'm not advocating for this thing, but I know that there's some people that would look at, let's say, Beritania Park. I would agree with it, but if something like that were to happen, how would that look?
Uh, I'm sorry, was, is the question of like if you wanted an off-leash dog park in a, in a park, how would that look?
Yeah, there's people who already have, you know, they, they take sometimes their dogs. It's not the best place for them to do it. I'm just saying, it's amusing for the sake of argument. What would it look, you know, for something that's small, you know?
What are the rules in other words?
What would be the rules? Would it be about the same size as the one in Ala Park?
So yeah, our, our off-leash dog parks are very, are different vastly in size. You look at like the Hawaii Kite Dog Park, it's pretty big, it's several acres, I think, in the tune of like four to five acres. Ala Park, dog, off-leash dog park, I think is probably a fraction of an acre, maybe a half acre at the most. So really, with the off-leash dog parks, what we've tried to do is utilize or take an underutilized area of a park and then create that fence around it and create that specific facility for off-leash area. So a good example of that is over at Ho'oloa Neighborhood Park over in Salt Lake, where there was an area that had really good shade from some monkey paw trees, but wasn't really being used. It was just kind of a shady area. And, you know, there was no recreational uses like a playfield or anything like that. So we put a fence around that and then that became an off-leash dog park. So if there's an area of a park that is not yet utilized, that you folks would like to see an off-leash dog park, that's typically where we prefer to put those kinds of facilities. Yeah, we certainly, yeah, we certainly don't want to take away like
Yeah, I, I need a suggestion. I've been, I've been seeing a lot more dog feces on the sidewalk on School Street lately and I don't, and I don't know what to do or say.
Sure. So there's two kind of efforts that we're doing in tangent with this effort to try and get more on-leash dog parks. One of them was actually thanks to the legislature, they passed Act 224 last year and it goes into effect this July where it identifies what a dangerous dog is and increases the penalties for it. And then the second one deals with what you had mentioned, fecal matter. So the, the two biggest concerns that we heard when we began this, this effort was about dangerous dogs, as I mentioned, and then about irresponsible dog owners not picking up after their animals. And so what we're looking to do, not, we don't want to just expand this privilege and not have some counterbalance with potentially more fecal matter being left on the ground. What we would do is if a, if a park, if that on-leash dog park privilege was expanded, we would put some additional signage on the proper usage, you know, to be responsible to pick up after your animal, to have them leashed, not to have them off-leash. And then we are looking at placing some dog poop bag dispensers at certain park locations as a pilot program. And we've had, we actually model, are modeling that right now after what the Waikiki Business Improvement District has done, where they put up a couple of these poop bag dispensers around Alawai Boulevard. And they have seen some definitely a decrease in the amount of fecal matter that they've seen on the sidewalk. Because what happens is when you provide those bags to dog owners and to the general public, they're more inclined to clean up after people who are less responsible.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
Are we keeping this limited to how many parks there will be at the end? Or is there like an end goal to have different parks in like sub-district where like each, near each communities? Because I feel like if we open up all the parks and provide that resources for everyone, it would kind of help people who walk their dogs in their own neighborhood, like immediate neighborhood, like don't have a car and all that stuff. So are we just recommending things for like a pilot program? Or unlimiting it to like five parks? Or unlimiting it to like five parks or is like the end goal maybe all the parks?
Uh, that's a good question and that's entirely up to you folks. Uh, whether you wanna see this across all the parks within uh your neighborhood, whether you wanna just see a few. Um, it's, it's entirely up to you. Um, I was, for instance, I was at a neighborhood board last night, uh neighborhood board number twelve, um, the Punchable New Wano area. Uh, and they had previously discussed this and they, their sentiments about it had changed where they did not wanna see any more on-leash dog parks within their neighborhood. Totally acceptable. So um ideally what, from this effort, what we'd like to do, this is certainly just the beginning of the discussion. Um, ideally, if you folks wanna use the next couple of months uh in summer to, you know, for, have further discussions about where you would potentially want or not wanna see this privilege, uh, we certainly welcome that. Um, and then if you could, uh, by September or the end of summer, um, ideally come to us with a resolution about, hey, we would like to see this here. We would not like to see it here. Uh, that would be great. Um, if you folks need more time, by all means, um, this is not a, a simple one and done type of uh event where, you know, once September comes, that's it. We're not considering it anymore. Um, if you folks wanted to take more time to discuss it and come to us at a later time, uh, we can certainly uh make accommodations at a different time. So um, by all means, it's not like this is just the only time that we're considering doing this. Um, if you folks need more time to consider it, um, certainly we can have those discussions later as well.
Well, I appreciate the transparency and flexibility and openness to give us more time. But um, I am very kind of firm on position of not having Lo'i Kalo be part of that.
Can I say?
Sure.
Uh, other than that, I feel like we can still have more conversations about this. We will be having a recess Nathan, next month. Please, you're welcome back in July.
Okay, yeah, if you folks send me the invite, I'm more than happy if you have more discussions, I can help facilitate those.
Last question, um, is this discussion open for off-leash dog parks as well?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, we're currently, we, you know, this, the broader effort for island-wide is looking at on-leash dog parks because it's, it frankly, it's the low hanging fruit. Uh, because it's, as I mentioned, really uh the things that would change, once we got, you know, consensus from you folks um and sign off from uh park staff, it would literally just be a matter of uh changing the website and then changing the signage that's at the park. And in some cases, that's merely putting a sticker over what, where it says no animals and having it say on-leash animals, on-leash dogs allowed. Um, so again, that's, that's pretty simple logistically to do. Um, the off-leash dog parks, as I mentioned, it's quite a bit more involved. Where we'd have, where we're looking at installing chain link fencing and then looking to see what irrigation is available uh to create, you know, a drinking fountain for the dogs. Um, so it's a bit more involved where we have to actually look at the areas, you know, have to look at the, the plans. Well, you know, what would, what utilities are underground um and to see what area we could do it in. So um, a bit more involved, but certainly, um, if you folks wanted to uh look at areas of, of your parks to um to consider them for an off-leash dog park, this is certainly a time to do that as well.
Thank you so much Nathan. We're gonna move on. Um, and we'll, again, please come back in July. We, we will be um at a new location, but I'll be in correspondence with you.
Sure, and I'll, I'll, I'll put it on my calendar already for July.
Perfect. Thank you so much Nathan. Okay, and we're gonna move along to Carl Otzuka, HFD Lithium Ion Batteries presentation. Hello Carl.
Thank you for having me.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we're gonna do the lithium ions um battery safety presentation. Um, my name is Carl Otzuka with the Honolulu Fire Department, been with the fire department for about twenty-four years. Um, and I really appreciate you guys having me here. Cause not only for the Kalipalama uh community, because you guys have these uh meetings on YouTube that, you know, the whole island, even worldwide, you know, people can get some information, right?
Okay, it's true.
You wanna bring up the?
Nathan's phone?
Oh, that looks good.
I'm thirsty too and I have a drink right here.
You, you, the other one.
Uh, yeah, that was it. Yeah, there you go. So the Honolulu Fire Department, we are seeing uh rise in uh lithium ion battery fires uh within every community on Oahu. Um, so very important to try to be more safe with our items that utilize the lithium ion batteries. These would include our cell phones, our tablets, our power tool batteries, uh, remote control type of, you know, toys, uh, e-bikes, e-scooters and as well as uh our e-cars, electric vehicles. So we're trying to avoid your home going up in flames like this. And there's really simple things you can do to avoid uh fires like this. Uh, this is in all of my um presentations. And it's very important that you guys understand that fire is a chemical reaction. Um, and you need heat, oxygen and fuel to have a fire. If you wanna ever extinguish a fire, you have to take away one of the legs. In the case of lithium ion batteries, it makes its own oxygen, it has fuel and it's very hard to cool down. So this is why fire extinguishers and water do not put these fires out. Next one. Next. Okay, so causes of rechargeable battery fires. Big one in red there is not reading your owner's manual. If you guys don't know what you have, you and not reading the safety recommendations, you are subjecting your family, yourself to a fire or worse. Um, and another cause of battery fires, uh rechargeable battery fires, overheating or overcharging. Damage to the battery, improper charging, charging on easily combustible surfaces and arcing from damaged cords, which can happen with anything you plug in. If you have a, a wire that's exposed. Okay, we're gonna watch a video. See, I bring fun stuff.
Very good, very good. Thank you. Entertainer.
Come back. Uh, try going on to the bottom left there. You see that bar that comes up? You gotta go over to that plane.
I see it, I see it, I see it.
Yeah. So remember the, the previous screen, we had um overheating and the first oh, maybe you pressed it twice and it paused? The mouse doesn't wanna listen.
Bad mouse.
All right. I am gonna be talking over the um, the audio on this too. So this is an example of overheating. You, you know, in Oahu, it can get really hot at the beach inside of your car. Um, a lot of us like to go to Vegas in the summertime. Don't forget your car, uh, your phone or tablets in the car. It can overheat and explode. This is improper charging using a cord that uh is not uh recommended by say Apple or your uh, or Samsung. And if you know anybody who vapes of that element that heats up the water to vaporize the water, it needs to kinda cool down. That element also could heat up the battery within the, the vape um cigarette. If you guys go traveling, do not put your battery pack that you're using to charge your phone in your bag, your purse, your fanny pack. It sh, it needs good ventilation so that it doesn't heat up. Anybody dropped your laptop lately? Monitor it and make sure that battery didn't get damaged from the drop. E-scooters should never, ever, ever be charged indoors. This guy sees the smoke, unplugs, grab your baby. Once you see smoke, call nine-one-one, get us there fast.
Oh my god, that's so bad.
It's too late. Once you see smoke, it's too late. This guy's in an elevator, he might uh damage his, you know, cause bicycles, you can drop them. Here's an example of water not being able to pull it, put it out. Fire extinguishers will not do the job either. And again, charging it inside the house. Your rechargeable batteries, we're talking lithium ion, uh nickel cadmium. Those rechargeable batteries need to be uh disposed of, recycled at places where they'll accept these type of uh items. And we talked about it a little in the beginning, uh, for more information, eopala.org. Don't throw it in your gray bins, don't throw it in your dumpsters. Um, H Power had three fires last year. Do not throw it away. You need to have it recycled. So um, and I do believe I did see on the Middle Street Convenience Center, they will accept it also.
That's it?
Should keep going.
It's stinking.
I guess. Um, okay, that's okay. Uh, we um part of this video, later on, they show also uh uh electric car that caught fire. Uh, we just had our first e-uh electric car fire at Tony Honda, brand new Honda. Um, this was two months ago, three months ago. Um, basically, the firefighters just kept water shooting at the battery which is located underneath the car. Uh, so that, that battery wouldn't blow and extend fire to more cars. Uh, if you did wanna see a type of chain reaction where. Okay, so this one, it's a bigger battery storage, but how many of us have um solar uh solar panels on our house and a battery backup near our house? Like uh, smaller than this. Once you see smoke, the message here is just call nine-one-one. We're gonna shoot water. What we're doing is letting it burn itself out, taking away all the fuel and that's how you put out that fire. Uh, that's what the cells look like within a battery. You got maybe hundreds, sometimes thousands of cells within a battery. And those are the things that explode and pop and uh can actually spread. Uh, yeah, and that fire at the Tony Honda Waipio, the captain estimated about like twelve thousand gallons of water used just to have it burn itself out.
Wow.
The battery.
That's right.
Uh, it burned, it burned for about three hours. It's not a class A fire.
Class D.
Oh, it's not a D.
What is it?
It is on its own. It's, it's, it hasn't been classified yet.
I believe you Carl.
Yeah. Uh, so your cell phones, uh, use approved cords. Always replace the cords if it's damaged. My son uh had a cord that was separating and plugged it into his phone and he got shocked and it's like, I was kinda like, good for you. Supposed to tell dad so I can buy you a cord.
But you're shocked, still like.
For real, for real, you know? You damage a cord because you keep pulling it from the, the, the cord and not the, you know, the, the place where you're supposed to be on. Yeah, everybody does it. So if you get shocked, isn't that your fault? Yeah, okay, uh, but no, replace it, okay? Uh, just throw it away, buy a new one. The cords you can throw in your rubbish. Uh, when charging phones, charge on a hard, preferably non-combustible uh surface. Uh, your nightstand, your counter, not on beds, not on clothes, not on carpetings. Because uh, my next slide will actually show. Um, and someplace where you got good ventilation. Uh, this is, right side is a uh Android phone, left side is an Apple phone. Uh, left side is more because of a damaged cord, the right side was overheating of the battery. All right, so don't go home, plug in your phone, throw it on your bed and take a shot. So what you're looking for is for apples, Apple phones, you're looking for that made for iPod, iPhone, iPad. And for Android phones and the newer iPhone, what are we on sixteen? Twenty-six. Anyway, uh, it's a USB-C. Your USB-C cord should have this certified USB charging. And notice that top certified USB charger forty-five watts. You gotta read your instructions. If your phone doesn't take a forty-five watt charger, don't be using it.
Let me listen to you.
Okay, you're gonna overcharge. All right, uh, but if you do see these, these logos, this is what you're looking for. Uh, next slide. If you use a MagSafe uh type charger, you're looking for this QI. Um, in Chinese, QI is pronounced qi. You're looking for that QI uh logo, Apple and Android phones consider the QI the underwriters laboratory safe um, safety expert. Okay, next one. All right, see, I did it fast.
Very good. Any questions from the board?
Oh, none.
Any questions from the community?
Really? No.
No.
Oh, cool.
Wow, you know, you have stunned the crowd.
Okay, sure.
Go ahead Donald.
This modern technology is becoming a real hazard?
Yes, um, most of the items we have that uses the lithium ion technology, lithium ion batteries hold more charge for a longer period of time. There are safer options. Do, do the companies wanna change to the safer options? No, cause it's gonna mean a, a less reliable product. So there's one battery that uh came out a few years ago, lithium iron, I-R-O-N. Uh, that one um is less likely to explode, blow up, going to thermal runaway than lithium ion. But it doesn't hold that charge.
What's in a cell, what's in a cell phone?
Lithium ion, lithium ion batteries.
There is some lithium. So if we drop it, what?
Um, if your phone, uh, because we have had devices in the fire department where when the battery gets damaged, it's, it tends to expand. And you'll feel a little bump. Once you feel that little bump, take it to wherever you bought your phone from and tell them, change your battery out for me. If you're able to, without a cover, I mean, I have a pop socket, but without a cover, just the phone itself, if you're able to spin it like that, your battery is expanding.
You're gonna return yours?
No, 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 I got a pop socket, yeah. Yeah, it's, makes it spin really good. But if I took this off and spun it, it should not spin. That's easy.
Okay.
Right?
Good test to know. Um, if, any questions from the board? Nothing, no questions from the community, nothing. You have stunned, is, can you have?
Donald.
Okay, um, Donald, you're good?
Yeah, fine, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much Carl.
Thanks guys, be safe out there.
Next month we have recess, July Salvation Army.
See you there.
Thank you so much Carl. Take care. Next up, residents and community concerns, three minutes each. Meeting participants may present their community concerns at this time. Note, due to the state sunshine law, concerns not listed on the agenda may not be, may be presented, but no board action can be taken. Items brought up may be placed on a future agenda for discussion slash action. Um, next up is the Hawaii Public Housing Authority, affordable housing initiatives and programs. and Seneca Management Group discussion on KPT. Yeah, Ben?
Okay.
Hey, you can go ahead and approach.
Wow, HFD, high-tech, yeah?
Very high-tech.
I don't have a presentation for you guys.
No worries, so for the record, if you can just, um, state your name and where you're from.
Sure, my name is Benjamin Park, I'm with the Hawaii Public Housing Authority. Thank you Chair Banus for having me today.
Thank you so much.
Uh, I too am a former neighborhood board member, and I do appreciate you guys making the time. Uh, I've been, uh, working at the Hawaii Public Housing Authority for, uh, twelve years now. Uh, I'm the chief planner there now. And, uh, I'm here to talk about, uh, Kuyu Park Terrace, low-rise and Kuyu Homes redevelopment project. Uh, so just some context, um, this, these properties were built in like nineteen fifty-three? Nineteen sixty-five, they're pretty iconic, uh, I'm pretty sure you can't miss them when you're driving on the freeway. Uh, they're right next to Bishop Museum, and they are, uh, made up of twenty-two acres, we've got two big towers there that have five hundred fifty-five units, and then we have a bunch of low-rise apartments. Uh, there are a bunch of, uh, twenty-nine, one and two-story buildings. Uh, there's a hundred seventy-four units there now. Uh, they're trying to increase them to about five hundred to six hundred twenty-five units. Okay, so I remember working in twenty thirteen, and that's when we started this Choice Neighborhoods Initiative. Uh, the, the year before that, they started working on the refurbishment of the towers. And that was about a hundred twenty-five million dollars. At that time, it was sold to Michaels Development Company. So they are our redevelopment partner, but recently, we changed redevelopment partners to High Ridge Costa Development Company. Okay, so this redevelopment project, um, it's been talked about for a while. These properties are way past their useful life. Uh, and so, um, we started this, uh, formal redevelopment process, uh, in about August twenty twenty-four. And this is after, well, twenty thirteen, so I'd say about like ten years of, uh, of meetings, of community input, a lot of area legislators were involved, uh, with our, uh, Choice Neighborhoods Initiative grant that we got. And so, uh, I'm just gonna fast forward, uh, to, uh, September. The first phase includes sixty families that have to be relocated, because we're not gonna be refurbishing them, we're gonna do a complete demo and a rebuild. Uh, and that first phase is gonna be approximately three hundred units. And then, so, there was an, the feds require a ninety-day notice to the tenants there. Uh, that actually, um, was extended, uh, for the holidays, uh, to February, uh, twenty twenty-five. But we're still going through the process, um, and currently, it's been about eight months. So it's been quite a while, but we're still working with a couple of families to, um, help them move. And, uh, while it's not federally required, you know, all families that are in good standing, it's a board policy, to guarantee them the right to return, uh, once the new units are built. Uh, so as long as they remain in good standing, uh, which means not owing a delinquent allowance, not manufacturing or doing drug activity, or not, you know, doing acts of violence, or in eviction proceedings, uh, they, they will be able to come back. So they were provided with, uh, that in our relocation plan. Our executive director provided them with letters, provided them with, uh, even certificates, we made certificates, and they're all delivered to every, every tenant, even the ones that had previously moved. So everyone knows that they can come back. And, um, currently, those sixty families, we have forty-five families that have completed moves, uh, to comparable units, uh, either within our other HPHA public housing properties. Uh, well, I think one family went to Vegas, uh, because they have Section Eight vouchers available to them also. Um, and so, seven of them, um, they're, they found a unit and they're in the process of leasing up with a Section Eight voucher. And we still have five more families that are currently in the process of deciding on a unit. A couple of families got off the program, and one is being reviewed with our, uh, Hawaii Affordable Properties, uh, management company. Uh, so, you know, our, our, um, our team, our redevelopment team, which consists of, uh, High Ridge Costa and Seneca, uh, you know, we're still continuing to work with the remaining five families and, uh, to place their vouchers, to help them find units, um, that are on the market. And I think, you know, some of the, some of the concerns and some of the lessons learned, uh, that we've gone through, uh, is, uh, you know, we need to make sure that communication remains constant. Uh, we need to make sure that we plan as best as we can and keep following up and not play phone tag and stuff like that, because, you know, our, our families are busy, you know, they're all working, most of them are all working. Um, they, they have very busy lives as well. Um, but, you know, we, we have Section Eight vouchers available for them. Our public housing inventory is kind of limited to whatever we have right now. Uh, but, you know, hopefully after construction, uh, construction starts at the end of this year, uh, we're gonna be looking to close on our financials in, in July. And hopefully, we can start construction at the end of this year, and then in a year and a half, they'll be able to move that, as long as they're in good standing. So, that is what I have for the board.
Um, any questions from the board?
Yes.
Donald, go ahead.
Where is this, Ed, this app you, you're talking about? Um, it's on Lina Puni Street. So it's like, um, you know, when you go down School Street, you see the two towers, the KKT Towers? It's like over there. So you know Sunny's Mark on School Street, the Jack in the Box, right? Can't forget those. Right about it. Big bridge. Pretty big, it's one of, uh, two that we're growing, I know you live by, uh, you know, you, you, you go to the senior center a lot too, right? And that's where our offices are, and you see the construction for the elderly tower going up, right?
Yes.
I think they made fourth, the fourth floor now. So it's, it's, it's moving up pretty quick.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
So the portion you guys are doing, uh, renovation on right now, is there a second portion you guys are doing? Is there like another phase for more families?
Yeah, I believe that it's gonna be broken up into three phases. So the first phase is closer to Sunny's Mark, right? When you turn on to Lina Puni Street, it's gonna be on the EVA side. So that group of buildings, those sixty families, that's the first phase. Uh, and then, if you keep going into Lina Puni Street and you make the bend before the school, I think that's the second phase. And there's one right behind or next to the school in the back area, and that's, I think that's the third phase. But all of these phases all depend upon assistance and funding from our area legislators.
Any other questions from the board?
I just wanna say something.
Go ahead.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Park, but, you know, my family, I raised my kids in, in housing, and the ultimate goal for me is to see families get off. They stay over there, and you know, the ultimate goal is to get off of housing and to get into the regular, you know, society. That's the, not to be, uh, generation and generation and just staying into housing. That's the ultimate goal, because I've seen it, I've lived it.
I have too. But, uh, just to let you know, there's no, uh, time limit right now.
Yeah.
There's no requirement, except to be income eligible. But there is a new guy up in DC that's trying to change all that. So there are some, uh, initiatives that the new secretary is trying to do with HUD, and that's to impose time limits, like two years.
I'd like to see that too.
Also impose work requirements.
Yes.
And also, um, I think they wanna try and do more of these redevelopment projects.
I'd like to see that, I'd like to see them get into more, uh, work.
A, a lot of our families work, you know that.
Yeah.
A lot of our families work, they're very hardworking, but we have a lot of elderly, we have a lot to save.
I just have a question. Uh, question, so for the Section Eight vouchers, how long do those last for?
They also last forever, as long as you income qualified.
And that goes with sixty AMI, right? I believe, is that for the?
Uh, I believe for, um, Section Eight, you have to be fifty percent AMI or below. Uh, for public housing, it's eighty percent AMI or below, so this is roughly, if a family of four, the area meeting income is a hundred nine thousand dollars, believe it or not. So, uh, for a single person, uh, fifty percent area meeting income below is like about forty-five, forty thousand or so.
And you qualify.
You have to apply on our waitlist, and currently, our waitlist is closed. So these tenants don't have to go on our waitlist, they get what's called a tenant protection voucher from the feds, from HUD. And that's how we're able to use them to help them relocate or move to a different public housing property, but we take care of those families.
I have one last quick question.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
Is that, um, like the income, is that gonna be, uh, the sa- on the same basis when this opens back up? Or are they gonna be moving them?
So those tenants that left, they will be able to come back and continue to pay whatever rent they were paying before, depending on what their income is or what it becomes, because they pay thirty percent of their income as rent. So if you make three hundred dollars, you pay a hundred dollars. I'm just using that as a example, I should say, if you make three thousand.
Pay three thousand dollars.
Yeah, if you make, you, you know what I mean, right?
Yeah.
But, um, also, uh, the thing is, is that, uh, we're talking about, are they gonna come back at the same rent? Those people were, those people are, but in the future, it's going to be an affordable rental, uh, housing property, which means we're gonna be using low-income housing tax credits, uh, and the US Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD, they're the ones who determine what those affordable rentals will become. Uh, usually, it runs between thirteen hundred for, uh, studio or one bedroom, and you're looking at about seventeen hundred for a two-bedroom, but I can get you the latest, uh, rental schedule that they have.
That would be very helpful.
I can give that to you.
Thank you so much.
How much is a two-bedroom?
Uh, I think it's around seventeen, eighteen hundred bucks, but I won't.
That is so cheap, for a fifty AMI?
No, that's, that's what the affordable, that's gonna be up to sixty and below.
So we're gonna move it on to community, if there's any community questions?
Is it okay?
Does anybody have a question?
Nobody's, many questions.
Any questions from the community?
Thank you so much.
Please, um, have a seat and state your name for the.
My name is Lenda, um, Tomoniko, so I live in the second phase.
You can have a seat, so the mic, because there's some mic right here, you could be able to, um, record.
My name is Lenda Tomoniko, and I live in the second phase of, um, Kuyu Park Terrace, but we've been, um, helping our families that live in the first phase. Um, the thing about this is, um, I'm not for the redevelopment, be, um, because they haven't given us any word of coming and talking to the residents, letting us know what kind of redevelopment is gonna take this due to the fact, Michaels was taken off their property, so now there's a new redevelopment. So they haven't met with the, um, community, so we really don't know what's happening, if it, if it's gonna be the same plan or what. Another thing too, we wanted and we asked from the beginning, we wanted a guarantee letter that all the sixty families, you know, will have first choice to come back. And then we also asked, because I live in the second phase, with the three hundred homes, will I be able to be one of the families to live in this new place that they're building? And they said, well, right now, they're gonna go according to income, yeah, whatever the income is, whatever they're receiving. But, um, my thing is, we've been, um, um, we've been going and fighting for our community. We've been doing this for the last, I think, right now, six months. We've been going through the state capital, our bill wasn't passed, yeah, because of one person. We're not gonna stop to fight due to the fact that there's a lot of hard-working families in the housing. It's not like we wanna live in the housing, but because we have a lot of kids, a lot of elderly, we can't make and pay like, what, three thousand dollar rent? We don't make that much money. A lot of, a lot of the people who live in the, um, housing, some of whom are high school dropouts. So the kind of job that they get is not max that, you know, we can live that way. Yeah, there's a lot of people, a lot of them, their second language is, you know, their language that they speak, like maybe martial arts, Micronesia, and whatever it may be. Yeah, so, having low-income housing is a need for this island of Oahu. You know, because it helps people, a lot of good people come from housing, yeah? And it helps, because if you make like a lot of money, then you gotta pay more in the housing. I pay, my husband was paying, me and my husband was paying over two thousand three hundred. And that's in the housing now, because whatever you make, that's what they're gonna charge you. Yeah, so, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. Any more questions or comments from the community?
I, um.
Sorry, yeah, please have a seat and then for the record, state your name. Thank you.
Um, my name is Sistanti Ju. Over there at Kuyu as well, I just, I just have a quick question, um. I wanna know what are, maybe Ben can, sorry, Ben looking stressed, but do you know what they're gonna do with Lina Puni Elementary? Because it's very vital to have it on the property. There are a lot of single mothers, as you may know, in the housing, and some of them don't wake up on time, forget the cake is ready. So Lina Puni, which is such a blessing to the community, sometimes the kids, you can tell mommy never wake up, they get up, all cup of kahiri, they do, and just go school, and Lina Puni dressed them, brushed their teeth, combed their hair, because it builds character in them from a, you know, child, the way they should go. It starts building education in them, so I wanna know what they plan on doing with Lina Puni Elementary? Keep it on the property, do you know?
Uh, I don't work for the Department of Education, but I haven't.
Yeah, but I feel it because it's on our property.
I'm sorry, Ben, go ahead.
But I haven't heard, um, anything about closing it down.
They're gonna dismiss it.
I think they're, they have a plan.
I should hope so.
And they're, and they're going to be closing, they're looking to close some other schools, some of, some of them are in our area too.
Yes, yeah, I could.
Um, but yeah, I haven't heard anything about closing that one down.
I should hope. Paul?
Okay.
Any more question, thank you so much. Any more questions from the community or online? Oh, please have a seat. And also, will you be able to state your name and where you're from?
Hi, I'm Josmire, I'm also, um, a former resident of Kuyu Home.
Hello.
So I just wanted to, um, come in here and share my testimony about the relocation process.
Okay.
Um, while not everyone shares my view, I want to represent those who had a good experience and are grateful for the opportunity to, but are not here tonight. At first, I didn't fully understand the process, but I attended several meetings with the developer Michaels and the relocation team Seneca in twenty twenty-four. While there were some communication issues about where the relocation would start, the process still moved forward at its own pace. The relocation team was thorough, walking us through each step of the process, explaining what relocating would entail and what the development of the units would look like when we return. They were incredibly kind, clear, and supportive, helping me understand my options, addressing any concerns I had, and reassuring me every step of the way. I saw the redevelopment as a much-needed opportunity since many of the homes were in poor condition. Change can be hard, but it's necessary for this community. People often cling to what's comfortable even when the system is being abused. Despite protests from other residents, I believe we had enough time and options to choose from. The confusion arose when some listened to people outside of the first phase, which caused unnecessary fear. Sometimes outside voices create more confusion and clarity. My family and I have since moved into a comparable unit that is safer and more up-to-date. I'm a single parent, so I understand this whole process, you know? Um, it's just me and my son here tonight, and I just wanna thank everybody who has helped during the relocation process. Obviously, moving is not easy, everybody knows that, but in Hawaii, it is very expensive, but sometimes you have to understand that everybody is working hard here, you know? And, um, I just wanna say thank you, and thank you for letting me share my testimony.
Of course, thank you so much. Um, any questions from the board again? Any questions on the community online? I think that's all, but thank you so much, Ben, for being here.
Thank you, Ben.
Please feel welcome to return, uh, we'll be at another location in July, Salvation Army.
Okay, let me know.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Chair. Chair.
Sorry.
Say something for Ben.
Yes, Senator.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that, you know, for years, I've been representing the area. And uh, for years, we've been made aware of the redevelopment of Kohiho Park Terrace. I've been very vocal about it. I was there several years ago when they had an open house and they had all the plans out there. Asked many questions, uh, demanded, you know, the residents that would be displaced would have adequate notice, adequate meetings. I have questioned um, the director as well as Ben, and he can attest to that. As to the number of questions and issues that were raised by residents, non-residents, and nonprofits representing them. I know that people don't want the redevelopment, but what do you, what do you wanna do? You wanna let the properties just deteriorate? We have to improve it. And there are many, many families that cannot even get on the waitlist. And I know there are many families that have lived there for twenty, thirty years. Um, and again, as it was said, that you know, public housing was not meant to be a permanent housing for life. You have to make way for other families to come in and to redevelop the low-rise to be medium-rise will allow for more families to, and more housing in the community. So I, I really think that um, we as a community, working with HPAHA, have really tried our best um, to work with many of the families, but many times, there have been a lot of demands and um, and some of them unreasonable, I have to say that. Uh, but again, there are so many families that are on the waitlist and they cannot get in because nobody moves out. And they demand that they continue to be able to live as, as usual. So I just want to make it known that we continue to try to um, work and make housing for all the residents that need a helping hand and need a way to get themselves back on track so they can join in with the rest of the community, and that's what public housing wa- was made for. Um, but at the same time, I think uh, HPAHA have bent backwards to allow for uh, people to come back in, to have first right of refusal, uh, and to be able to become part of the new phase. But then there's gonna be phase two and phase three. Uh, Kohiho Park Terrace is very fortunate, the DOE has a, a school there up to third grade, and it has been very convenient for the residents. No other housing has that available to them. And again, it's DOE though, that has to decide. And many of the teachers feel that it's not their job to brush their teeth, it's not their job to, to comb their hair, you know? And that's why a lot of teachers don't wanna teach anymore. We have a hard time having teachers because they feel that their job is to teach, and more and more the community and families depend on teachers to raise their children. So I think that's another issue that we really have to look at, because our schools are so important, our teachers are so important. Um, and many of them feel that they have been burdened with things that families should be taking care of and the teachers. So I, I thank you for the, for your time to allow me to, to speak up on this. I know there's a lot of concerns in the community. But uh, myself along with Representative Templow and Representative Hossi, we all work closely uh, and trying to make sure that we can work and help all of the residents in Kalihii. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donna.
Thank you so much, Senator. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Ben, for being here, and I will be in communication.
Okay, thank you, Esteban. Thank you, Len.
Thank you for your time. Uh, we are moving on to city elected officials. Premier of the City, Mayor Rick Blanchardi's representative, Deputy Director Stephen Courtney, Department of Information Technology.
Yeah, good evening. And residents, my name is Stephen Courtney, the mayor's representative and deputy director for the Department of Information Technology. I will start with highlights from the May's New Blitz in May twenty twenty-five. The link along with other information can be found in the chat. City and state leaders are issuing an urgent plea to the local community, especially their local lawyers, to help address homelessness by serving as guardians at light of for a civic community treatment petitions. Mayor Blanchardi signs two new bills into law to improve public spaces. Bill one for outdoor dining rules and bill two for breaking King Street festivals. City leaders have unveiled a massive new solar canopy at the Playstel Center to celebrate Earth Day in Honolulu on April twenty-second. On April fourth, the city held the first Malama Island Day at Kaluku Point on Oahu's North Shore. And Mayor Blanchardi will have the sixth town hall meeting tomorrow, Thursday, May twenty-second at six-thirty. It will be held at Bradford High School. I have two departmental issues for follow-up. The first one has to do with repainting the median on Ala Kaua Street. A community member requested that the Department of Transportation Services repaint the median lines on Ala Kaua Street. The lines from that road are faded. DTS performed investigation and inspection and determined that the pavement marks did need to be repainted. As such, a work order was issued to the Department of Facility Maintenance to repaint the main pavement lines. And the second one has to do with a designated left turn. A community member asked if the Department of Transportation Services can install a left-turn dedicated signal for vehicles turning into Koska Traveling Akai on Ala Kaua Street. The area around the Koska gas station always backs up and creates a huge traffic jam along with the rail construction. DTS will conduct an investigation which will require research, site inspections, and a left-turn phase study to analyze that area. DTS will apprise the board of the status of the findings once the investigation has been completed. And if you have any issues with the city tour point, please use Honolulu three-one-one. Which now that info is your one-stop shop for updates from the city. That concludes the mayor's report. Mahalo. Are there any questions from the board?
Any questions from the board? Go ahead, Ken.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. This is more of a comment. Thank you for bringing up about the garden at Lightem. I'm glad that that, you signed that uh, into law, um, and love to see what that's gonna look like. Been dealing with this thing for a while, people's reasoning and decisional capacity and, and the, the back and forth between, you know, what is considered similarities and, and the safety of our community. So I'm really happy with this garden at Lightem, a lot of us signed.
Any questions, other questions from the board? Any questions from the community? Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Stephen. Uh, we'll see you, we have recess next month, so we'll see you in July.
Okay, I'll see you in July. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Moving forward, Councilmember Radiant Cordero.
Hello, good evening. This is Tricia Ariapell from Councilmember Cordero's office. Um, I just shared, hi, I just shared her report um, link in the chat. So if you could click on the, or see it there. Um, but to quickly go over it, um, the first page, we have some dates on community concerns. So there was a request to consider a new parking facility to provide additional parking in Kalihii for future rail users. Um, DTS, the Department of Transportation Services, conducted an investigation and concluded that um, due to, you know, cost and feasibility, there's no additional parking that are, that is currently planned in the Kalihii area. And there's more information in that first section. Um, for one-nine-four Kalihii Street, we have a quick update. There was a notice of violation issued and um, Councilmember Cordero did recently visit that area and reported that a fence has been put up, so it has been secured, the property, and will continue to keep the board apprised of any future updates. Um, and then moving to page two, there is an update on removal of trashage three from the Kalihii stream. So we'd like to mahalo DFM and HPD for their help in that. Um, and middle of page two, there's some safety guidelines that HPD suggests for when motorists are driving on roadways with no lane markings. So that's some good safety tips. And bottom of page two, you'll notice that there is an upcoming cleanup on Saturday, May thirty-one, at the Kapalama Canal. So if you're interested, um, there's more information there. Quickly moving on to page three, councilmember had attended the Farrington High School's career fair. And also, we participated in the bike path cleanup that was held um, last month. And page four, hopefully the legislative updates. I wanted to highlight Resolution twenty-five dash one-two-eight, which is the top of the page. Um, so this was introduced by councilmember and the resolution would authorize HPD to conduct overt video monitoring. And the overt just means that it's clearly visible surveillance cameras in city parks. And this is, would be part of a one-year pilot project. Um, this is to kind of deter, or in parks where there's high levels of crime or ongoing safety issues. And I understand that HPD can request the footage. Um, so if you'd like more information, you can look in that section. There's also Resolution twenty-five sixty-three, which is renaming San Island to Mariola. Um, and then skipping to the last page, I know Nate from DPR had mentioned the dog-friendly um, inquiry about which park should be included. So there's some information there. And lastly, on the bottom of page five, if you have Kiki that are interested in summer fund, there's some information on um, the registration is, that has gone on and is currently ongoing for certain sections of the island. So please let me know if you have any questions and I'm happy to take them back. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board? Evelyn, go ahead, Evelyn.
Hi Evelyn, calling, um, Trisha, please let Radiant know that I appreciate her hard work and efforts in regards to one-nine-four Kalihii Street. Um, it really did turn around um, our community and on behalf of our community, I'd like to say thank you. That's it.
Oh, thank you, Evelyn. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Evelyn. Any other questions from the board or comments? Any questions from the community or online? I'm hearing that. Thank you so much, Trisha. Have a good evening and we'll see you in July.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Tyler, uh, Tyler Dos Santos Tam or Representative?
Aloha Chair, aloha board members and community members. This is Lynn Robinson for Councilmember Dos Santos Tam. Um, just, hi, brief um, report. I've put the link to the councilmembers newsletter in the chat. And um, I'll put my contact information in there as well. Um, the Susanna Wellesley Community Center is proud to announce the la- launch of their free store. So this is a new initiative that's been designed to serve as a resource and a safety net for the Kalihii mu- uh, community when um, so many are, are in need. Um, it's planned for a summer opening and the store um, it was originally set, oh, planned for a summer opening, but it was um, able to launch in March. So for anyone that's interested, um, that's at one-one-one-seven Kylie Street. And it's open twelve, twice a month, the first Friday and that second Saturday. And there's clothing and shoes, household items. Of course, they're taking donations as well for anyone that's interested. And uh, you have to register and advance to go to the store. So you can go to, on Tuesdays and Thursdays and register for the um, in-person or by calling um, eight-zero-eight-eight-four-seven-one-five-three-five. Again, that information is in councilmembers' um, newsletter. And um, I, uh, we did wanna report, uh, report on um, Resolution um, twenty-five zero-one-five that was introduced uh, jointly with Councilmember Dos Santos Tam and Councilmember Wire. Um, proposes some changes to the types of apartment pro- projects that'll be allowed on Oahu. So effectively, um, some of, some of, we have some very restrictive zoning laws that um, should be revisited so that we can um, start modernizing and expanding the zones so that um, to pave the way for developments and hundreds of new units could potentially be built. So in um, if this resolution passes. Um, I don't wanna belabor the, the um, newsletter too much, but I don't know that I had any community concerns from last time, so if anyone has anything else that they'd like for me to take back for the councilmember, I'm happy to do that.
I do. I'm not quite sure, but I'm gonna mention something to you, Lynn. Um, there is, there's a, there's a sort of an enigma. And this part, I, if you, I'm gonna just mention it to you, and if it needs to be passed along, then please do so. But it's a bridge that is in the back of Kalihii Waena Elementary School. And that area of which touches the bridge has, is involved with several different government entities. So it's not just one. Therefore, it is quite complex of who takes what jurisdiction and whose responsibility to fix what part of the bridge. Um, again, it's in the back of Kalihii Waena Elementary School. It is in dire need of repair and restoration. It is vitally important for the community as children from KPT Kohiho Park Terrace utilize that to go to and from school every single day. Um, and it is heavily utilized. Um, and it is a standing thing that is very necessary for the community to have. Right now, it's very unsafe. But people utilize that to go to school, to and from. So if you can please.
They're still, they're still walking on it even though it's in disrepair.
There's, there's actually holes, there's holes in it. So it's, it's, it's dangerous and it needs repair. There's several different government entities that need to get involved with this because it's not just one. So if you can work with Tyler with this and look at it. Um, furthermore, for that school, there was a situation of an attempted kidnapping in the restroom, which is quite concerning because that was during school hours and it affected a very young girl. So if there could be some kind of security or gating for that area. I was involved with a sting operation with HPD a couple of years back. For some reason, that area, children fall victim to sex offenders. I don't know what it is. But if you, I'm just letting you know, the history and the many years I've been involved in some of the things that have gone on over there. It needs your attention. And if you can please pass it along to whoever needs to help with the bridge restoration, safety, and for the fencing and more security for that school.
Um, I'm happy to do that. I, um, the Department of Education is probably, that, the attempted ki- kidnapping was a restroom on campus?
Yes. And that was, it was during school hours. It happened to a young girl, elementary, elementary-aged young girl. It's an elementary school.
I'm sure that our state counterparts are listening to, yeah, but I will absolutely take this back. And let's find out, you know, um, you know, who needs it.
I did write a letter to, thank you, I did write a letter to um, Congressman Ed Case also. So if maybe somebody can get in contact with him too. Um, because again, it, the feds, there's a certain allotment easement of the land that is also for the feds, right? So just to make you over.
Oh, wow. Okay, okay. Thanks. I'll follow up.
Go ahead, Deosa.
Hi Lynn, sorry, um, Chiridaga. Uh, the principal at the school, oh, my son goes to that school, he's actually asking businesses, um, and anyone actually could write letters to Ed Congressman as well. Um, I know Amanda already sent one, but if you guys could have Tyler write one too, would really be appreciated.
So just so I have this for clarification, we're, we're requesting federal funding for fencing?
Federal funding, um, again, the bridge touches on the part of certain jurisdictional. Yeah. Bridge touches jurisdictional easements of several different government agencies, which is just not just state or city or the feds, it's, it's an allotment of mixture of all of those.
So it's not just the fencing we're concerned about, it's more so just the bridge in general to get it replaced?
The bridge is.
Fencing part, but the bridge is the part that has the multiple agency jurisdiction easements. That's what makes it complicated.
Chair, is there any?
The thing is just DOE state, that's similar.
Okay. Um, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but if you might consider um, emailing me the letter that you wrote, we could probably mirror something similar.
Yes, I will, I will email it to you.
Okay.
Thank you, Lynn. Any questions from the community? I'm sorry. Kalihii Waena. Kalihii Waena, uh, Waena Elementary School. Uh, here, okay, thank you so much, Lynn. I will be emailing you and getting correspondence of several different things that needs to happen at that school in and around that community area.
Sounds good. We'll help however we can.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Have a good evening and we'll see you in July.
Sounds good. Aloha.
Thank you. Aloha. Uh, next up is community updates. US Army Garrison Hawaii Military Report, Selena Gettamski? Sorry if I've.
That's okay.
I apologize.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board, members of the community. Um, our next hiring fair is uh, June twenty fourth at Kapala High School, starts at eight thirty, ends at two. Um, provisional hiring for the day, um, two references, proof of ID, social security card, resume and application. Um, you can go before and apply online at HIMWR dot com. Um, Child Youth Services is um, probably the, the one that is requesting people the most. Um, and if you work for Child Youth Services, there's a variety of benefits like retirement, um, access to all recreation facilities, discounted childcare, training, and commissary and PX privileges. Um, we're still training on Army Lands, which is mostly central Oahu. Um, this year, the Army is celebrating their two hundred and fiftieth birthday, so the community is invited to come um, and celebrate with the Army for Army Heritage Week at Fort Taurasi on Thursday, June twelfth. It starts at ten and ends at three. There's going to be static displays of military vehicles, uh, equipment and emerging technologies. Um, and then there's also like, there's going to be soldiers around, so if any children want to talk to soldiers, look at careers in the military, not just active duty, but Reserve, National Guard. So all, all of those folks are going to be there. And then the final um, announcement I have is about the uh, the Oahu Final Environmental Impact Statement. So in accordance with the National Environmental Policy Act and the Hawaii Environmental Policy Act, the Army published the Final Environmental Impact Statement on sixteen May for Army Training Land Retention and State Lands at Kukuku Training Area, Pohomoh Training Area, and Makua Military Reservation. The proposed action is an administrative action that does not include construction, modernization, or changes in ongoing training. So the final EIS assesses the environmental impacts of the proposed action alternatives and no action alternative. Um, from the date of publishing, which was sixteen May, there's been a thirty day, there's going to be a thirty day waiting period, which started on the sixteenth of May, followed by the Record of Decision, which uh, will occur later this summer. And that is all I have. If there's any questions?
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? I do have a comment. I am surprised, pleasantly surprised that the Army has decided to uh, let go of the, of the Makua in twenty twenty nine. Thank you for recognition of that. Um, other than that, that's all. Oh, thank you so much and I'll see you in July.
Yes, thank you.
Have a good evening, be safe.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along to state elected officials, Premier Nishich, Carl Rhodes or Representative? Moving on to Senator Donna Mercado Kim?
Aloha again, everybody. Uh, I did send in my-
Senator.
I did send in my community report earlier to the chair, hope you all got it. Uh, as you all know, that the legislature adjourned on May second and we did pass over two hundred bills, several of which have already been signed by the governor into law. And a full list of the bills are available at capital dot Hawaii dot G O V. Under the reports and lists section. Uh, all passed bills have reached the governor's desk and subject to action by the deadline dates of June twenty fourth, the last day for the governor to notify the legislature about any bills he planned to veto. On July ninth is the final deadline for the governor to sign bills into law. Um, if he doesn't sign them, he can let them become law without his signature. Or he can veto them. And if he does veto, the legislature, if they want to override his veto, must convene a special session at or on or before noon of July ninth to override any of the bills that he vetoed. Community events taking place, Farrington High School graduation taking place this Saturday, May twenty fourth, four thirty PM at the Stan Sheriff Center. Uh, want to wish all the graduating class of twenty twenty five best of luck in their future endeavors. Having been a Farrington graduate myself, I will be there at the graduation. I miss it being on campus, um, but I guess Stan Sheriff has a lot more room for everybody. Also Farrington High School, we will have groundbreaking for the new gymnasium, yay! You know how many years we've been waiting for this new gym? How much money we have been locating all these years? And the groundbreaking will start from nine AM on Friday, May thirtieth. And I will be there as well. And so um, this will be a great addition in a, to the field that we have there. I'm going to have a new gym. So with that, so any questions that you would be?
Um, any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? You know what, Senator, I just wanted to say again, thank you so much for all your hard work, time and dedication to the community and for the community. I thank you so much for your involvement.
Thank you, thank you, I just want to add on the bridge at the Kalihii Waena. We actually put money in the budget for that several years ago. And I thought that it was, it was a project that was going to be taking place. Uh, because we actually went down to see it, so uh, we will follow up again to see what happened and it hasn't taken place. So uh, you have my, you have my word on that. So thank you all for the hard work that you folks do and have a good month off and we will see you in July.
Thank you so much, Senator, see you in July. Aloha. Okay, we're moving along to Senator Glenn Wakani. You know, Steve? Okay, uh, I have to say though, Representative Daniel Holt? Representative Shirley Templow? Okay, Governor Josh Green, Representative? Okay, uh, we're going to fast forward now.
Yeah, that's what-
Any, any committee reports? The only committee report that I have is for HPD is the June sixth Friday uh, from the Salvation Army donating to Shoppo to give uh, donuts on uh, National Donut Day. Yeah, I'm going to be part of that.
I imagine this could be considered in terms of education, not just education, but just in the whole. So I, we first, I first became Chair, it's two thousand eighteen, I think right around there. It was about forty seven thousand people and of those forty seven thousand people, thirty percent, this is our population, our neighborhood board, did not have a high school diploma or GED. So what they're mentioning there is very true in terms of the population that we deal with. I can show you other facts and figures, I can show you other things that I have over here in terms of the education. So we all kind of have an idea of how money goes, what the different plans are. I'm just general, get you a, a different overview of what can go on. As for on the high school side, um, I'm glad that they're having a graduation, everybody be safe.
Thank you. Um, okay, so we're going to move along to community resources, anybody else though? Sorry, I didn't want to, we're good, okay. Um, community resources and educational institutions, if there are concerns about homeless individuals or groups in your neighborhood that need help, you can email HonoluluCourt at Honolulu dot gov or call the court hotline at eight oh eight seven six eight two six seven three to ask for assistance. This line is for non-emergency only and calls will be returned as soon as possible. Another one is to report a concern such as sidewalk repairs, park maintenance, bulky item pickup, the bus, paratransit, handy van operations and et cetera, please visit their website, it is noted, please take a look at that. Board business approval of minutes Wednesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty five, anybody wants to move?
Move forward.
Is there correction?
Correction, right, is you, you were present?
Yes.
Yes, is that required? I mean, I mean, but correction noted, yeah. Noted, yeah.
Then was present. Um, anybody want me to approve?
No, yes.
Second, thank you so much, minutes approved. Uh, filling a vacancy two at large seats, I think we are. That's what it says. Uh, we have elections, so good luck, everybody.
Good luck, everybody.
Good luck, everybody. Announcements, the next Kalihii Paloma Neighborhood Board number fifteen meeting is scheduled to be on Wednesday, July sixteenth at seven PM. The board will be on recess, you do not come here, you will not be here, resume again on July sixteenth, twenty twenty five, at the new location, the Salvation Army Core Community Center Conference Room at two ninety six Front Vineyard Boulevard, Honolulu, Hawaii, nine six eight one seven. The Kalihii Paloma Neighborhood Board number fifteen reporters can be seen on a level, channel forty nine, or at the website at the following times, first Monday of each month at nine PM, and second and fourth Thursday of each month at eleven AM. Meeting adjourned.
Good luck, everybody.
Good luck, everyone.
Have a good one.